We're gonna call the special meeting for the City of Vernon, 11-21, and by heart.
Dear Helen and Father, we thank you for the stay and we thank you for this opportunity to gather here tonight. We ask that you guide and lead us as we make decisions for the City of Vernon. Help us to always do your will and follow in your way and keep our community and nation safe. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Amen.
And we're gonna open the public hearing. Public hearing of the City Council of Vernon, Florida on the matter of ordinance 22-230, an ordinance of the City of Vernon, Florida providing for a public utility service tax to be levied at a rate of 10% on public utility services provided within the city. Requiring all sellers and said services to collect and pay to collect the tax to the city. Making it unlawful for any entities to refuse to deliver the collected taxes to the city. Exending certain entities from said tax. Providing the city with the authority to audit the records of the collectors of the tax provided for an effective day. Would anyone from the public do like to speak on this ordinance?
Yeah, I'd like to know exactly what tax you're talking about. We just got our tax certificates and there's Vernon City Tax on there. So are we talking about a tax forever? Most of these taxes that some of these other counties and cities levy, they're for one or two or maybe even three years to pay for a bridge or some other item along that line. Or are we talking about here forever?
It's just a utility tax.
Is the public utility service tax ours? Has that been at 7%?
Right. That's seven meals, not 7%.
No, no, it's not the property tax.
It's not the property tax.
Yeah, separate from the property tax. It's just our utility tax. Ours is 7%. All the other counties are 10%. We've been at 7% for years and very, a long, long, long time. So we're just trying, without adding and increasing the residents' bills, we're trying to find alternative routes.
All that was explained, so I didn't know what was going on here. Just talking about taxes in per se, we think about it, the property taxes and everything else.
Does anybody else have anything? Hearing now, I want to close the public hearing on the matter of ordinance 22-230. Can I have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The public hearing now. We're gonna now open the public hearing of the City Council of Vernon, Florida on the matter of ordinance 22-231. An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Florida, Washington County. Approving the application of HSC Vernon LLC for an amendment to the future land use map for comprehensive plan of the City of Vernon, Washington County, Florida. Date April 4th, 1991. As amended by changing the future land use designation from the City of Vernon, low, medium density residential to City of Vernon commercial for 2.34 acres of land at 3306 South Avenue, Vernon, Florida. Partial ID number 00-4722-0000. Providing for a copy on file and providing for severability and providing for an effective day. Would anyone from the public do like to speak on this ordinance?
Again, doesn't it have to be posted at the property site for a matter of 90 or 120 days? I thought any property that would be changed from private or public to commercial property had to have a sign posted there?
Should we explain that? What we did is, we, as a Washington County planner and also the city's planner also, and the Planning Commission sits as yours advisory board. And so the process is that we staff review and the Planning Commission recommended approval. There were neighborhood, there was a neighborhood information meeting, there were workshops held at the City Council. But 10 days before the Planning Commission, the sign was posted on the property. And we're also required to advertise in the newspaper twice at a minimum. And letters were sent out to all residents within 500 feet of the property. So we tried to, and there's also the neighborhood meeting that is held two weeks prior to the Planning Commission use of. And that's optional, that's not something that other local governments do, but we do. And so we try to cover our bases and we do have increases there. If the sign fell down, I apologize, but it may still be up on the property.
I believe it's up.
It was up yesterday.
It's red, yellow, orange, and then yellow, yellow green.
I don't run the road that much around here these days, so I haven't seen it. But I appreciate you explaining, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Does anyone else have anything? I'll now close the public hearing on the matter of ordinance 22-231. Now, a motion to approve. Second? All in favor, let's keep the discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We're gonna close the public hearing at a time of 9:07. And we're gonna open up our workshop. Before we get started, and I spoke with the city attorney on this. Jason has asked for number six to be removed. It's been requested that number four be removed. I'm asking that number five be removed. And 17 at this time, because we've already been eliminated.
What number again?
4, 5, 6, and 17. I don't know if you all have any more to be figured out.
17. I actually have something to say about 17 if I could, once we get there. 4, 5, 6, and 17.
Yeah, I'm asking for that to be removed. Number one, check presentation of the VHS project graduation.
I stuck it in one of these. Don't shake my hand, honey. I was gonna hand you a little piece of paper that didn't really have a check in it, but I stuck it in one of these envelopes and can't find it. Look at these beautiful children that are gonna graduate in 2022. I'm so proud of y'all. She will have a check for y'all. Thank y'all so much.
Y'all get me in.
She's fast.
And number two, review Family Dollar tree store plans and variance away.
Okay, tonight we're discussing the Family Dollar Tree, major development review application that's been submitted. And as part of that request by the applicant, we, there have been, there are several variances requested. Variances usually appear in the development.
Pardon me, what's the location of the Dollar Tree?
Old Dixie Dandy. Oh, okay. I have a couple of questions about it.
This proposed store is located at Main and Court. And the site is approximately 1.05 acres in size. And it's to be the site of a Family Dollar Tree store. And the store, the building itself, is proposed at 10,500 square feet. And also with that application, the applicant is proposing several variances, which would be to reduce or relax the setback along Main Street, which would be 50 feet typically. And to relieve the buffering requirement along the property line to the south. Next to the residential property, there would be a 20-foot vegetated buffer. But the applicant is proposing fencing and vegetation instead, but not to 20 feet in width. And a third request is for a parking variance to allow 37 parking spaces in lieu of the 42. And that is reserving some of the building for storage warehouse and most of it for retail, but only counting the retail square footage towards the parking. And that is, and what I'm doing tonight is to request approval, but with conditions, because we still are coordinating with the applicant regarding stormwater and we're coordinating with the county engineer.
Have you received any comments from the neighbors regarding the variance requests?
Yes, ma'am. At the Planning Commission meeting, we didn't have, we didn't have a neighborhood information meeting for the development, that's not required. But with variances, letters were mailed out to all property owners with a 500 feet. We did have a neighbor inform us of some stormwater issues adjacent to the property, to the west of the property. And because the neighbors living in a low-lying area, there were concerns that with this new store, that would just increase the problems in that area. The engineer said it should, you know, you can't predict the future, I mean, you can't, it's not 100% perfect, but if the storm system is designed to the standards and the stormwater pond in that area near the neighbor's home and property is built to a 100-year storm event, if all is designed properly and constructed properly, that should prevent a lot of runoff. You know, you're supposed to keep the runoff on the property. And so the Planning Commission said to, you know, send a note to all and to the county engineer to make a special note that the stormwater is an issue. We want to make sure that the stormwater report, the drainage report is proper and meets code.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'm the neighbor that was at the county commission office meeting, excuse me. From what I understood though, their retention is, they're counting on what's already in place now. They're not putting in any, correct? They're counting on what's already been provided by the city, the drainage that's there.
On the property, there'll be a retention pond.
Okay, I, what is the size of that? I mean, I'm curious, how big is that gonna be? There's not a whole lot of...
Not very big with the small parcel of land.
Exactly.
You'll be right, I mean, the idea is to keep that from, you know, flooding the roadways and I understand.
But at the meeting, you said that they was accommodating for an inch? Of water?
I mean, the code, the code and state requirements for the permitting, you've gotta retain what the storm events on the site. And so pre and post should be the same. But with the rain events that we've been having...
That is my concern, I am the lowest. Everybody, that house was built in 1954. Every house and apartment building that was come after that have all built up. I'm all for progress. I definitely would love to have a new dollar store. I'd love for Vernon to progress. We need, we need it. As long, I would just really hope that they take in mind of the residents in the area to make sure that we're safeguarded from the water. Because if I lose my home, what good is for me to go to a dollar store when I have nothing, I can't put it in the house? My home's gonna be ruined. So I just really hope they, and I realize they are doing a report. I just really wanna push in the fact that, you know, it just really is necessary in that area.
Can you recall, I mean, it seems like forever, the meeting was forever ago, but didn't he say the drainage was towards Jackson, to the north?
I would think so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not going in, but I'm still here. Hey, you didn't even play, or City Council, I'm Tim Lawley, the acre engineer. So to answer your questions about some of the drains, the inch you were stating, that's just the water quality portion of the pond. So there's a portion of the pond designed to hold and retain the first inch of rainfall and not let it go and let it pervert into the ground. Then on top of that, it's designed for the pre and post for 25-year storm per state law. And then it's also designed to contain and push out the 100-year storm. And currently, there's an existing small swell in between your property and our property. That swell is being enhanced and deepened to help get water to the pond. And then our pond is located at the north end of the property. And I, excuse me, I don't know, there's a street there in the north end with coal sack. And there's an existing drainage structure there. So our pond is located just on the south side of that drainage structure. And then it'll dump into that existing drainage pipe going underneath that street.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you say deepened, do you mean the one adjacent to my property? Or the one that's also, in the old days, it ranged to the creek by the other property? It was, went all the way through and flushed to the creek? So are you just talking adjacent to my property or on the opposite side of Jackson also?
Yeah, so this would be, if you were looking at the street from your house, this would be out to the right. There's a grate inlet right there on the road. And that's where our pond would drain into that pipe that's connected to that grate inlet.
Okay, I understand that, but it's stopped up on the other side of that.
It's stopped up on the other side of that.
Yes, the other side of that is obstructed. So that's why I'm saying it, it doesn't have anything to code. You can dig deeper, but it, you know, it's still gonna flood it over if it's being obstructed, you know what I mean?
Well, we might have to look into that and see if we can free that up.
That would be greatly efficient.
And I would like to look in that. So when you say obstructed, is the, is the pipe just damaged or is it just, what do you mean by obstructed?
It has, over years, the earth has resigned, you know, there's no drainage no more. It's, you know what I'm saying? It's up, it's leaking.
It's just a ditch, it's not a drainage ditch.
Yeah. It doesn't exist anymore.
So the pipe is intended to dump out into like a free alcohol ditch on the other side of the road? And you're saying that's kinda filled with them?
No, it's intended to go into the creek.
It's the way it was originally planned.
But it's all stopped now.
I don't, it's in the drainage report, I don't have a copy of it, but the volume should be in the drainage report somewhere. I've been just looking at it.
Whose responsibility is that if that drain is stopped up? Cities?
That would be the city's responsibility.
That's what they told me at the meeting, but...
Or whoever made that, that road, it's a city, it's a county road, yeah.
So can it be done because you're, because you're then digging towards the creek and you've got environmental issues with that now?
Yeah, it is.
They dug out my ditch deeper and it has helped.
But it still don't help. I mean, that property, I mean, I'm all for the Family Dollar whatever, but her property is low. It rains, it floods her in place. I mean, one, just one rainstorm, she's underwater.
I mean, I stepped on my, last time, last storm we had was Sally. I stepped on my back door and I slipped and I went underwater in my backyard. It was foot and empty.
Due to the ditch being stopped up?
Pardon me?
Is that due to the ditch being stopped up?
Um, I don't, there doesn't seem to be drainage. I mean, they've dug it out since then and it helps, but this is what, if there's enough rain to fill the ditch, once the ditch is full, it's still gonna, so I have that much now that they took a ditch out. But once the ditch is full, I'm out of gas, it's gonna flood to my property. I mean, I don't know the answer, I just hope.
See, that's what I'm looking at right now with the state. The state pounded me. And it's not gonna happen to another citizen in Virginia, I'm telling you. I got pounded, the engineer lied. Come to my house three times. When it rains two to three inches, my yard's underwater. I mean, I'm with Tony. If it rains a foot, the water hits my yard and then it just backs up in my shed and all. I got right at $60,000 damage right now, a lawsuit against this engineer. You know, and it's not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and I'm all for any business coming in Vernon, but y'all gonna have to, the companies gonna have to spend some money and whatever you got to do to fix the drainage.
Well, we'll be happy to look into that.
It's not right for them, you know. They just, they lied to the city a lot, even DOT. I mean, we got a lot of issues gonna happen in the future with the road down here. And we get pounded each and every day about the turnarounds and all. It shouldn't, never been designed like that, you know. And, but it's just a sore issue. Especially me, even the store below me. I mean, they got pounded, it was uncalled for and what happened. But I'm not gonna sit, I know where she lives, you know, it's low there. And to me, it's hard to justify, cause I build every day. It's hard to justify putting a 10,500 square foot building on an acre and holding pond, you know, and do the proper drainage and all. And you talk about a lot of work. And I don't care what business goes there. And, you know, I do it every day. And like I said, there's a lot of research and I ain't looked at the plans, we just got them, but I'll have my engineer look at it, you know. Cause, you know, I don't wanna sit here and approve something and pass it on cause the county goes along with the city, the county passes things, you know. And the county likes to see growth, we all do. But still, you got a citizen right next to the building and the business that's going in, that's gonna get flooded. If it rains two to three inches, and it does all the time, she's gonna get flooded.
Well, I mean, I apologize, we all had some issues in the past with our engineers, but I mean, that's what we do for those that design drains. I mean, I take it very seriously. I'll be happy to look into whatever issues y'all have across the road and do whatever we can to help and make that right. I mean, I can assure you, what we have designed on the site will work. Obviously, if it doesn't have water to drain to, that is an issue that needs to be addressed. And we'll be happy to, you know, I wasn't aware of that until, you know, two or three minutes ago when it got brought up.
I just think that that's part of, and not blaming you for the state by any means, and we want the city to grow. But looking at the whole picture, as, okay, I've designed it to drain, but where's it gonna go? That's got to be taken in. You gotta walk over there and look at it, I mean, before, before you say this is gonna work. And my issues aren't with drainage, they're with other things, but knowing what's happened to those two, plus a couple more, plus the business, we just can't say, oh yeah, we want this because we want the city to grow. We want the business, but not at the expense of the citizens. I have an issue with turning, the major turn-in being where it's at cause I feel like it's gonna be pretty dangerous. So I have an issue with that for my personal issue. Cause the safety of our citizens is, you know, very, very important to me.
Is there somewhere, I believe that's where DOT, that's the initial feedback we got from them.
Yeah, and so when you say that, right then and there?
I'm sure, trust me, I wish I didn't have to deal with DOT, it's not pleasant.
Well, a lot of the people that work there, probably maybe not the person that designed our road and medians where we can't, we gotta drive and they hope to come home. But does anybody else have any concerns?
Mr. Brock raises his hand.
Yeah, I got, I got three things I about to bring up. Is there a possibility of putting a berm between the holding pond and her property?
Yes, we could put a slight berm there if it may be. I don't know that that helps if the water...
But you know, it's...
That essentially could damn water up on her property. I think right now the water's draining from her property to the ditch on our property. So we damned it up, I think that makes her problem worse.
If the ditch is natural, my understanding, if it's been there for 100 years or longer, then it goes into the creek, then it shouldn't be unblocked because that's a natural drainage area. It's not something that the city put in. It's been there, I used to go down to the Laggins' house and play kick team. And that ditch was there back in 50s. So I'm sure it looked like it'd been there forever. So if it's a natural drainage ditch, then it should be unblocked to go into creek. I mean, most places, farms around here, going up there to Jack Marshes, you got digges out there, they're still there. They don't fill them in and start farming more land. Third point is, who's gonna be held liable for that? That means you got to get extra insurance now?
No, I've already asked that question at the county commissioner's office.
Well, we in here need to know what's going on too.
Well, they told me that if I get flooded, they're liable.
Okay.
But do you have that in writing?
No, ma'am, I had it at the meeting where they took the minutes up there at the county commissioner's office. I hope that works.
I would count that for two cents. They won't include it in the minutes.
But it was stated, their lawyer actually stated it. Cause I asked him personally, and he's the one that said yes, that I could take action.
I worked there 18 years.
Well, we really, we really do want you to come to town. I don't want you to think that we are against it in any way, but we've gotta take care of the citizens.
Right, well, and I mean, I just, you know, I just don't want y'all to be exaggerating. I mean, when you have an open pipe, I mean, typically it flows somewhere, you know. I mean, y'all have the local knowledge that, hey, this is sort of ditch has been filled up over the years and that kind of stuff. I mean, you know, I'm not privy to that knowledge being two and a half hours away. Does anybody know how long it's been filled up or why a lot of ditches been filled?
It's natural occurrence, it's probably.
Erosion.
Hasn't been maintained.
Other houses put in.
Number one, just poor maintenance.
Yeah, it hasn't been maintained.
Have you dug that one out though? You said you dug out for...
I gotta get permission from every landlord.
I was looking at it and seeing you mommies. That's fine, I'll answer that.
Yeah, I've been trying to, everyone, I gotta get permission, written permission to go on the property.
Well, that's what it is.
Tell them we're here now, get the permission to what they get. Lots of factor won't fit on these, on some of these.
Well, and we, we're supposed to maintain all the ditches.
Yeah.
I mean, it's even been contracted out in prior years, so if there was a ditch there...
And I mean, we've had, how many hurricanes and still that, I mean...
So on the city side of things, what would it take? Do you know what it would take to, other than get permission?
Yeah, just get permission and just digging it out. But I don't know how bad it is on the other side. When she complained, and I went over there, she was underwater. And so she gave us written permission. So then we started, we dug her whole ditch. I dug it deeper than what it was. But that side where they're, they own is 10 times higher than her, I mean, it's way higher.
There's a grate over there also.
So it's, I think when they tore all that down, the Dixie Dandy and all that stuff down, it's just, it's leveled out there and she's...
So it runs across Jackson? What's it gonna do?
It goes across Jackson, I think it's underground pretty good ways.
And then it's gonna come out where?
In the creek.
But there's, do we know if the pipe is crushed under?
We have no clue. I have no, no way unless I can get Chipley or somebody, let me borrow their camera. That'd be the only way.
So you feel like it's pike a pretty good ways down to the creek?
Yeah, I think so, if I remember right, I think it's pike all the way. But I'm not 100% on that. So, there's a meter right there across the street there and there's a grate on the other side too.
Yeah, cause I mean, the ditch was open on our side. I would've looked at it before I came to the meeting.
Yeah, I dug all that out.
The inlet looked like it was kinda damaged and was some... The inlet looked like it was kinda damaged and wasn't working.
I think that pipe has been there my whole life, I mean, that.
I was probably gonna propose to redo that inlet and sidewalk right there around it as part of our, our project, just after I saw, when I saw the night, it looked like it was partially flat.
It's a small pipe too, so, I mean, it's been there until how long?
At best, we're gonna have to replace and put in a larger pipe for, for drainage. And put, put a, put the whole new line in.
Would the developer be willing to contribute to that?
Uh, I could definitely ask him. Um, I, I'm sure they probably would, you know, be able to help.
So how would you turn into your place coming off the bridge? Just tell me how is that gonna work? You know, and people who are coming off that bridge, how they come off the bridge? And how are they going to, people slowing getting into your property, getting into that store? My goodness, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to be like there, thirty-five?
They drive a lot.
They drive thirty-five, but.
That's what come, he gets, he sits there and get writes tickets all day.
If they were driving thirty-five, we wouldn't have a concern. But unless there's a permanent deputy station there, that's not gonna happen.
Or how would you go with that system?
I told y'all we could pay for one if we just let them write tickets right there.
Well, and we're gonna have to be there.
There's a turn lane there, you know, when you come off, the turn lane is there.
They talking about you getting your boy.
Slowly turn in and the turn lane be comparing.
Well, the sheriff's department doesn't have a man to sit in Vernon to write tickets all day long. So that's not against you, that's the fact that they headed to the beach.
It's all they see, like it's gonna drop when they get there.
Well, I mean, we're only, you know, a hundred feet or so up from where the, the light on board is anyway, so I mean, it'd be kinda same situation, I guess, where you make a right-hand turn on board, people coming down, so it's just, just up from where you make right-hand.
Well, they've got a right-hand, yeah, but.
We used to have a right-hand turn.
Yeah.
So, sim- similar to that turning, they've been turning it to the side, just a little.
I, I just, I do have concerns with that.
Does anybody else have anything? So Jason, you're gonna look into the ditch, and you're gonna look into seeing if they would be willing to help fix the issues?
Yeah, um, and I guess I need to pour next to you what you find, see, see what, what it is that needs to be done.
Okay.
Thank you. Number eight, request for room at city hall for food bank. Number three, Grace Assembly's request for room at city hall for food bank.
Um, yes, we wanted to, uh, we see a need, our church sees a need for a food bank here in Vernon. We'd like to, uh, if a room was available, we'd like to use a room, uh, here at the city hall for that. Uh, it'd be a community, it's not just, we'd like to start it obviously, but, uh, we'd like here, so it would be, um, for the community and also could be contributed by the community. Uh, we're just not a grace assembly thing, but uh, other churches or, uh, individuals or whoever would like to donate, um, could, you know, just feel, make, make them feel better, cause it's here on this facility. So, um, that was our desire. We'd like to, if a room was available, to, uh, use a room for a food bank. Uh, um, start with just a few hours a week and just see how it goes from there, um, and, um, see how we can serve the people through that.
We discussed this at the previous meeting about room number one, have you seen that? Is that adequate?
Yes, right across from the off, just coming in the door. We, we, yeah, so that'll be fine, absolutely, that'll be fine.
Well, you are, actually, this is on the agenda to vote on tonight.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody have anything for you? Thank you very much. Number seven, grant for gym roof, Kimmy and Garner in Tracyville.
Well, Timmy is not here, so he has someone who has said that they could put, um, they could turn in a grant for us to get a roof on the gym part, if you guys are agreeable and if we don't have to go through Redbox for that. Um, as far as I know, we pay him per contact for every grant that he writes.
We have a grant in motion there right now and to try to get approved, which includes the.
You give them?
It was supposed to, they couldn't get it.
Isn't that what y'all understood when he was here?
Yes, sir, they, they checked it.
Really, they changed it?
Before the meeting, whenever he came back the second time, it was before that.
Is that the only thing, just the gym roof?
Yes, ma'am.
Why did they take that out?
Oh, they took everything out. They are not doing anything to the gym at all. It's only the community center that C D V G is going to cover.
Did they give a reason?
No, ma'am.
So is it not the same?
No. They took the gym part out whenever they turned in the application.
They give you a reason for it?
Yes, sir.
I had to tell y'all that gym floor, fuck with them.
Yeah, the gym was the main thing we wanted to have on.
It's, it's got a hump in on about that tall now from the floor and water on it.
Number first?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we had special meetings, so we could approve the gym grant.
Have y'all contacted the county grant coordinator?
No.
I mean, I thought they were there to help Chipley, Vernon, Ebro.
Well, we thought we were getting help until just now.
So what's Tim, I mean, what's the? Can you tell us about the?
Yeah, that's all that I know. I mean, literally, he just had, had somebody say, hey, I can try to get you a grant if it's allowed.
Well, we, I guess we need more details than that.
But he wants, like I said, he wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with him checking into it even because of, um, Redbox.
I don't know whether we can or not.
Right by, he'll put it on his agenda. Infrastructure.
We already have a grant.
Redbox is exclusive or not? I mean, round hand, I don't know.
Putting everything else on there.
I mean, we, we've been using them.
As long as I've been here, I've been using them.
And before then.
No, I know that with the community variance that we've just done, we had to put that up the bid and he was the only one to apply, so he got that bid.
My heart has sank, y'all.
I know. I, I thought at the last meeting that everything was.
Yeah.
Going well with it.
Maybe we need to ask him to come to the next workshop.
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Fox?
He had everyone going at any watch.
Michelle, can you check online to see if it's exclusive or not? All right, number eight, Christmas bazaar parade twelve eleven twenty-one, Miss Candace.
Um, I had an idea, may work, may not work. A lot of times my ideas don't. Um, I thought it would be kinda cool to do a night parade, um, a lit, a allotted parade. So the cloaks could, could be lit and, um, just after dark and have the, the bazaar, market, whatever you wanna call it, prior to that, and Santa be there during that time, so that there would be people coming to see Santa and shopping at the vendors. A lot of times people don't show up to shop at the vendors, but two hundred people show up to see Santa. So I thought if Santa was there at the same time as the bazaar, it would bring people to actually shop at the, the vendors and then have the parade after.
So can buy it all or not?
Well, maybe, maybe Santa at three to five and then the parade at five thirty and the vendors, you know, there for that. That's just a thought and don't know that we can get approved for, to close the road.
Did you already check into that, Tracy?
No.
Oh, you didn't.
I heard you got a parade route.
I've got the route set up, I don't have a time for it.
Anyway, I just thought it'd be kinda neat that the kids would really enjoy it, cause they're gonna be there, cause they've just been there to see Santa. And then they can stay and then it would be, you know, allotted parade would just be a lot of fun, I think.
I agree.
I think we can get it approved, Tracy, we should check and see if we can.
So you wanna try to start it at five thirty?
I think so. Is that dark enough to see lights, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Is that all you have on that?
That's it. And if y'all don't wanna do that backup plan, um, regular, just like every year.
I, I, I think it would go very well. We can get it approved, done whole fall.
I think more vendors would come if they know that it's gonna be during the time like Santa Claus is gonna be there, because they're actually gonna have a few hundred people there.
Santa Claus in the parade?
Mm-hmm, and they're gonna line, you know, they line up for the parade. A lot of people are watching the parade now from there, so. Anyway, that's just what I was thinking.
Were you having a bazaar at?
Here, up front. Unless y'all say differently.
Number nine, Candace, the community center entry door.
Y'all, that door is embarrassing. You cannot open it. They think it's locked. They pull the lock out trying to open the door.
It's rusted all the way.
The, the door needs to be replaced, I mean, it's.
The frame off.
Yeah.
We talking about both of them?
Well, the one that they've got the key to get in, it's that we can't do anything else. I mean, the lock comes out when you're trying to.
It's bad.
To open it, yeah.
So we need to get some quotes on door placement?
Yeah. And it's probably a four-foot steel door, I would say.
Do you wanna go back with a sto- um, steel door or you wanna go with a steel one?
If you can go with a wood door, we don't have to buy one. I got about twenty of them out there in my shop.
Is it gonna fit? Is it gonna fit right though? That would be my concern.
The size is out there.
I'd rather have it.
A steel door.
That would be right and we can walk up, open it, turn it off and, I'm not saying you're like my contractors, I'm just saying.
I'm just, now there's doors out there piled up.
You gotta think this has got the steel frame to.
It does, yeah.
When you go back. Probably would be cheaper on us to go back with it, actually, than to try to resize and redo. I don't know, we'd need to get some quotes to see.
But if we could, if y'all are for that, I'd really like to see that done. Cause, well, right now, you've got the wrestlers and Zumba using it multiple times a week. You have to put a block to keep the door propped open, because they can't get the door open to go in and out. Kids are going to trip over the block sitting there, I mean.
Well, yeah, it needs, something needs to be done with it, and we're renting the building, so it needs to be. In over.
All right, thank y'all, I appreciate that.
Number ten, garbage only accounts.
Um, we have several accounts that have garbage only, which typically is not a problem. But we have a couple that haven't been paying monthly and their bills are piling up. What do we need to do? We have one here that likes to pay at events. Thank you, sir, we appreciate that.
So it's a monthly bill that goes out?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
I think it used to be, and I may be wrong, Ms. Quinn, you may remember, I, I believe that it used to be when they were not paid, then it, there was a notice given to you, the company, and it just wasn't picked up, I think, I'm not sure. Do you remember, Ms. Glenn?
Because we can't, I don't think we could, why, I think they had this, the garbage man has to stop picking them up though.
I think there was no, like, it, notice would be given to not pick up until the, it was, I believe that that's where it used to be.
Don't we give them notice now, Tracy, where we don't want him to pick up?
If somebody closes their account.
If I close, I can't wait to, we, you know, we don't know how this account closed.
Not to pick up, so you do the same thing with that. If they're not paying the bill, then why we still, why is they still picking up?
So how long are we giving them?
How long do you give order?
Thirty days.
Same thing.
So at the same time it's cut off, we notify waste management?
Yeah, it's the same thing.
So on the twenty-first, if it's not.
Was it city service?
Wait, now I got more people to call.
Yep.
We will not put them on unless it's Candace.
I love y'all.
Number eleven, city square update.
Oh, they are coming, oh.
We had your date in here.
It is, and I don't have. I think it's the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, maybe? Oh, it's somewhere, then I got all the time. The twenty-second and twenty-third. Beginning at nine-thirty each day.
And they're doing what?
Monthly O and M and quarterly groundwater sampling activities.
Okay, so that's the Monday and Tuesday probably after Thanksgiving, week after next? No, next week.
Beginning of the week, I think.
Yeah, it's next, yeah, next week.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Hold on, number twelve, twenty-twenty-two election cycle.
So we have early election, or primary election, August nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, and then January November the fourth through the ninth. So you guys still want us to come in at six and close at seven, correct? Or are we giving elections the key and code?
We have to pay overtime?
Yes, we do.
Can we not set a code for a, and then change that, like a special code for them to come in and then change that code once it's over and then just do that, so that y'all don't have to be here?
I can do that, but like I said, they'll have to have keys as well. Cause they have to be able to access not just that room, but they have to be able to get in here to get to our, um, refrigerator. Because they bring food with them, cause they can't leave one thing in here.
But they can walk down at eight o'clock when y'all get here and put the food in the refrigerator, couldn't they? So, I mean, I would just say a key to the main door and their door they're using.
That door?
Yeah, that one.
Thank you, and then their door.
Don't y'all think? Save overtime?
All right, number thirteen, special meeting public here and the second reading on ordinance twenty-two dash two thirty and twenty-two dash two thirty-one. Set for, uh, the mayor, he's called special meeting, set for November twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-one.
You know I don't know what ordinance twenty-two dash two.
That's the two that we did earlier.
Okay, well, I don't remember what the numbers are.
Two, three.
I got to know a name of it. So I call a special meeting for eleven twenty-nine, twenty-one, to read those two coordinates that are on this newspaper.
At five thirty.
At five thirty.
And I will advertise, advertise that tomorrow.
And in parentheses, in the future, it should say, Family Dollar Tree. I know it's not there, but I'm saying, you have to let me know. I can't know by the number.
From the front page.
Number fourteen, Rebutte Eagles, formerly Holston and Garner, I T quote.
This is for Jason and the fire department's laptops and also to add the fire department's wifi and internet to our server and protect everything.
Do they need all this?
That's all that is, is just the laptops and the internet.
Is this laptops included or is this hooking up the laptops?
This is them hooking up the laptops. They already have their laptops. So this is them putting the firewalls in place for those.
That kind of dollar?
Yes, ma'am.
And there, is there any additional costs monthly fees?
That will be on the second page. Hundred and eighty-one ninety for my. Hundred and eighty-one ninety for mine.
Do they need that?
Yes, ma'am, they do.
Why?
To keep hackers from getting information off their computers.
So what now?
To keep hackers out.
Keep China out.
Thank you. Oh, he's a great rock out.
A question there. A hundred and eighty-one, is that to pay for the laptop and for the monthly? Cause I got AT&T U-verse at my house over here.
I got it.
And, uh, it's, it's like sixty dollars a month, and it's high-speed internet. Anybody else got AT&T up there?
This is just for them to.
Just for protection.
We got, we got, I'm getting that already, and I already got.
I'm going to help department. They get protection up there.
That's a little hard, don't you think?
Hundred and eighty-one dollars a month.
Well, nine hundred to do it.
Yeah.
Come on.
We didn't budget a hundred and eighty-one dollars either, a month, for it.
Right.
What is the fire department gonna have on there?
Thank you.
That's gonna need.
They're gonna have all of their lines, which includes addresses and names. I mean, you know, Jason probably won't need it as badly as the fire department does, to be quite honest.
Only time I use it is while I order something, and.
Not putting any personal information on there.
There is, there's a lot of that fall under. I know when I worked for nine-one-one, over the sheriff's office and around there, most of that falls under Freedom Information Act.
Yeah, the run reports are generally, I think, public record.
But it can't have medical information on it?
No.
No.
Potentially.
Well, wouldn't that fall under your mess?
They shouldn't have medical information on them. On, on here, it says set up for one computer, not two.
There's two, the quantity is two.
It says two. Okay, cause at, at the top, it says professional computer set up for one computer. Right under the description.
And then the quantity over to the side says two.
Okay.
And the line total is the unit cost times two.
We didn't budget for this.
Nope.
Why don't we just table the issue until it's before the shop?
I'm good with that.
First of all, you need to contact the chief, somebody needs to be at the port shops, somebody. Cause we can't even, we can't ask nobody, nothing about the fire department. Thing is, before I approve that, I'd rather buy my own before I approve that.
That's gonna be with the ortho money.
Still, I need to ask the chief, assistant chief, or somebody, cause it's the clerk handling it.
Well, I just wanna know how often to use it. That's what I'm saying. How often, spend that kind of money, how.
Yeah, the run reports are what? They're quarterly sent in?
Those are daily. Those are with every single time they leave the shop.
They send them straight in?
They don't send them to us. We never, how often do you get those?
Um.
But Shaq has been sending those to E O C.
That's what I'm, I know that.
And I don't know how often he does that.
So we need to find out how often he needs it.
Find out from E O C.
I used to get them monthly, but that computer once they got lost, the internet, I haven't got one since. So we're gonna table it? Okay.
And you can also table it on the, um, meeting. It's number six.
Okay. Number fifteen, thirty-four ninety-six Bull Mill Road, um, West Street Camper, Jason?
Yeah, uh, some, Mr. Gary over there, there's a camper set up at a, uh, house. They are hooked in, uh, they're living in the house. And there's somebody living in the camper, hooked to sewer and water, and Mr. Gary's talked to them already, but I don't, what do y'all want me to do?
Did you hook them up?
Nope. They got a, uh, a pot right across the ground.
The campers hooked to a water hose, which is illegal.
Yeah.
And how they dump sewers, they hook the truck up, pull it up to the trailer. I went and talked to the landowner today, cause the people in the camper been driving on my property. I took care of that part. And I told him what they were doing was illegal. I didn't want him to get in trouble. It's only, it's only city's responsibility.
Yeah, and we get away with the, the camper.
Well, if you.
So they supposed to be gone.
Six months.
Huh?
Six months.
Six months.
Yeah, we don't even know how long it's been there.
Yeah, but you hear, they come and ask to be hooked up.
Mm-mm, no. Well, it'd be, that's illegal.
Correct.
They're living in a trailer, too.
But the trailer's legal.
Yeah, the trailer's legal. They just tapped it into their personal cleanouts, what they're doing. But, I mean, they're still.
Michelle, do we need to send them a letter, or?
I just get them to go over there and go on property, and then something happened, and then I get in trouble, and I'm gonna bring y'all.
Did you speak on that?
So be it code enforcement?
Did you speak on that part there? They're talking about a camper being on property, living in.
Jimmy, what's the rules on that? Jimmy knows.
I thought, if you were building on a piece of property, county would give you some loan, convert six months. If you were, if you're actively building on.
Yeah, they're not built.
As far as I know, you're not allowed to live in a camper.
No.
In this camper.
You can get an affidavit, if you're building a home, like you said, you can get a piece, piece of paper, both hiding the building permit.
But you, you'd have to even ask for that. Yep. But you got people that you're.
Well, some of them have been grandfathered in.
That one hasn't.
That one has not.
No, ma'am.
For like the sister-in-law.
So. How should we proceed? Should we send a letter, Michelle, or?
Uh, yeah, you can start with that. Like I said, this, this is a, um, it's a code enforcement issue.
If it, if that's a violation of a city ordinance, why is it a code enforcement issue? That would be, that's no different than me going out there, filling up a ditch, and that would be a code enforcement issue. So we're making code enforcement issues out of every issue. If this against the city ordinance says Jason has the power. D E P rules.
I go out there and I.
Well, if you turn your water off, if you turn your water on, do we have to get a code, and you're not, if that meter's locked, and you go out there and turn it on, then that, is that a code enforcement thing? No.
No.
That's a city thing. You don't go and turn off the water here. If your meter's locked, then you don't turn it on.
And we had at one point, after Hurricane, um, we're allowing it, but we cut that out. Now, I don't know if we have ordinance against. Days or not, but I know it was stopped. We didn't?
The first, first step, send Jason with a letter.
I would say, yeah, they need to be notified by the city then.
Does county have any jurisdiction here?
Not right now.
It's in the city, isn't it? It's in the city?
It's in the city.
Yeah. But, or does our city have a license, a code enforcement officer?
No, sir.
That's been schooling them.
It's not, I don't think it's code, well, I don't know if it's code enforcement.
If you use code enforcement, that is a school.
Living in.
Training.
A hidden camper is code enforcement.
Been the pay raise.
So should we send them a letter, and then not have the county if they don't respond, or?
Is the county giving?
What, what's the difference if they not pay my water bill then?
Well, so we have, we have an ordinance that says if you don't pay your water bill after a certain date, they shut your water off.
What does, what does the ordinance say toward the camper?
I don't have it in front of me, but I don't think we're.
Somebody should have read that. You got what you're looking for.
But still enforcing the ordinance is, is code enforcement. You can designate Jason as your code enforcement officer. There's zero criteria in the state law as to what qualifies a person to be a code enforcement officer.
But we, do we have to do that?
There's a differ on that, ma'am.
To tell that what they're doing is illegal?
I mean, I, I would definitely take action to direct Jason to, to send that. I don't know that you have to make him officially a code enforcement officer, start his job title. You can designate any, any. I'm not making. You wanna do it, I'll show you.
Tracy, do you have, do we have a copy with, of an ordinance that says there's no campers?
I can get that, yes, ma'am. I think that was probably done. I had a copy, I had a copy whenever we banned it, or whenever we, um, whenever we stopped it, after Hurricane Michael. So I know we've got one somewhere.
We done it with the county. When county allowed it, we done, I think we extended it. We'd only done a year. They've done two years.
No, we did two, they did one.
And so we just stayed with theirs. And I just along, I, I know who these people are.
Tracy.
Yes.
I'd recommend contact the county, cause I don't know. It's, it might be totally different in the county. You might, they might come back and tell the city, anyone, not just building a house, you can live in a camper six months. If that's the case, the people being, need to be notified on saying they done wrong, we hooked water hoses up. They need to correct it, come up here and go through procedures, and they can live there six months, the way I see it now. But I'm with Gary. They in violation. The way I see it, the city can't do nothing to them. First of all, we got more violations than the city ain't been handled. Cause of code enforcement. Who's gonna take care of it? The sheriff's back there. They ain't gonna, they ain't gonna do nothing. They don't come inside the city to do anything. It's animals, dogs and cats. I ain't, I ain't just sitting here and just keep naming. People parking, blocking people in. Where does the city have guidelines to step in and send, uh, our supervisor on the property, or, or whatever we, the city has to do? Cause I, the way I see it, they stealing water, each and every day.
And the sewer, too.
Stealing water and sewer, they not paying for it.
Well, you're right, Joe. We need to document the six months, so we need to notify them.
I don't know where the county, and, and, and I heard Jimmy, and I checked with the county, I know it was in previous years. Um, if you was, I don't know who started it, if you was building a house, you can live in a camper for six months, but that might not be the county ordinance. You might live in a camper, cause I know we're a couple more here in the city that's living.
I do, too.
In the city.
I think those are grandfathered in.
No.
No.
None of them, I know, but I'm saying the city needs to get a copy of the county ordinance to start off with, where we pursue, cause the only thing they've done wrong is they tampered with evidence that the city property and hooked water, sewer up. They stealing water and sewer. But if the guideline is they can live there six months, the city needs to set a date, say, listen, this date forward, you got six months to stay in that camper.
Can you run two sewer and water taps together like that? Do they have to have their own individual tap?
You're right. They gonna have to spend much money, but they can't, if, if the county ordinance says six months, you can live in the camp, in a camper six months. They got the right to live there six months. The city's gonna have to set a date, say, at this date, you got six months.
Yeah, but wait until the day that they've been there before.
I know that. I thought by if they properly do it.
They've been there four months already, according to Ms. Wester. She called the day and stated that.
But that camper.
So the land.
No.
The camper's been there forever, but people live there.
The trailer's been there forever.
Yeah.
The camper's been there about a month and a half.
Mr. Rock's got his hand raised.
See, the problem with the campers, it's not tied down to the code. Mobile hold and stuff like that, they got to be tied down by code. They got to be inspected by the building department when they come out there and inspect it. That camper's not tied down to anything. Y'all accept, I believe, some responsibility. If storm comes through and maybe hurt somebody in that camper or kills someone, I don't know, but. Six months was the guideline, eighteen years I worked with the county up there, and you had to show proof, like you mentioned earlier with the building department, that there was a foundation going up, that there was a little bit here going up. You didn't have to have the house finished in six months, but it had to show proof that constant building was going on.
But for right now, they are illegally hooked in.
To the sewer.
To the sewer.
Water and sewer.
To the water.
To the water.
And when they dump our sewer, they had to pull the camper up to the trailer, then dump it. And they do that about at nighttime.
Would that say, would the city stand, Michelle, would the city, you know?
I, I was like, we looked at this back in two thousand fifteen, um. This is when you all sent out letters, um. Identifying, um. The travel trailers that were gonna be grandfathered in.
Do we have a list that they want to be grandfathered in?
I think you would, but, because Michelle could have emailed me about questions about the specific people that were getting, um, these, these letters. Um, as a part of that, we required them to have, if there was a, an R B on the same property, they had to have, um, separate connections and meters. For each, so it may not be just the R B issued.
Well, the people that send the trail was violating also.
There's actually two campers on this property. I would.
So.
They're not.
They don't.
There's a brown one in front of it.
That's, that's a motorhome. He, he, he drives that everywhere. Nobody lives in it.
Well, the trailer that's there, a family lives there.
Yes.
Somebody lives in the trailer. Well, they're the one, they're violating, if they let somebody do that.
That's what y'all.
To me, they are.
Well, finding out about the campers, one thing, but getting them disconnected from the water and getting their own tap in is a completely different.
Saying, that's the problem.
Thing, and that's what we need to be taking care of.
That's the problem.
Right now.
Right now, we need to take care of it. We don't let people hook up their water if we shut them off, so how we let them do that? Come on, we need to do something. If that's not right.
I'll keep researching, see, um, if you have the ability to just turn off the water services. I wanna say that we looked at this before.
And in the meantime, can the city, um, send a letter to?
Cause I don't wanna go into property and then.
Let them know that we know that they're there as, for a timeframe, I would think, just on a six-month issue, but.
They can move it, bring it back again for another six months.
If y'all, if y'all allow that camper to be there six months.
Well, the sewage thing needs to stop immediately. It's clear, when I'm saying, if that needs to stop now, with the water and the sewage needs to stop now. So how do we, we need to do something.
Go back and read, go back and read the ordinance that pertains to that.
We sitting there talking about the trailer, them in there, that's not what, that's not the discussion. They're, they're doing something illegal, so what are we gonna do? I mean, they living in this camper is not the issue. It's that they're stealing sewage and water, that's the issue.
The, the, the people who had on the trailer should be paying the water bill, it's not paying for.
Their, the water sewer's getting paid for, it's the tap issue that you're losing.
That's the problem. That, yeah, that's the problem. Tapping issue is the problem.
The water.
It's being paid, that's.
If he's allowed to pull a camper in there six months, I'm fixing to go over there and dig a bunch of holes and put campers in. I'll move them out there for six months. There's no difference.
Bring them back.
That's right.
I mean, I can get some good money off that people coming to the beach. All I gotta do is pour about eight slabs. I got extra sewer tanks where I'm at.
Okay, so what, what do you, what do y'all want to do? We, we need a note on it.
Send them on record.
Yes, I, I, I need to find the ordinance that. I, I don't win, ask if that, I don't have a copy of it, but it needs to reference that.
I'm not going to wrap that up. I think it's in that on the one I have.
So they can do a letter after Michelle gets the ordinance pulled up and knows the exact proper wording to put in it?
And we can put that with the letter as well.
And in the meantime, Tracy, can you check on what Joey was saying about?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Uh, number sixteen, engineering package for CDVG and the ranking sheets. Were needed to be completed. Is that table?
Tonight, yeah. I booked it.
Um, do we have to do this tonight though, or, um?
Becky, that's Chad, Chad, you done it?
Yeah, what?
Have you done your sheet?
Can we look at that at the eleven twenty-nine meeting?
If that's fine, is that going to cost us any points? Is it gonna cost us any points?
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay.
Cause we already done the advertising. And, I'm sorry, really quickly, um, you did get that email that they're going to be here doing the science section twelve two, correct? Jason?
I had it.
And anybody that wants to come and be involved in the interviews is welcome to council. As much as I'd be encouraged to.
We still have a meeting to go, can I have a motion to adjourn the workshop?
Um, I actually would like to say something about number seventeen.
We took seventeen off.
I would like to say something about it, though.
You don't have, you won't take it off?
We took it off, we were in agreement that it was off the table, so I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I got something. And Becky, maybe you can answer me. Uh, I can't tell you how many years I was, uh, president up here, I've been here fourteen years, and I ain't said nothing yet. When did we go back, or when did we start, uh, logging? Cause I ain't put nothing on, on, if, if you can, uh, remember, I haven't, I ain't put nothing on the agenda for a workshop. I thought workshop was designed for people that sat at town to sign in and for different things. I didn't think it was designed for the council members and the mayor and whoever want to speak. Cause I got a bunch of issues. The thing is, if you want, if I wanted to call Tracy and put my stance for workshop on the agenda, from, uh, the cemetery to just naming. Y'all have three sheets of paper down here for me. But, what I'm saying then, just explaining to you, uh, usually the president turns before you adjourn and asks the clerk, the lawyer, if she's got anything, the mayor, right down to the council members. You see what I'm saying? There's nothing against.
I have a problem with that, I'm, I'm new at being a president, and so, I don't have a problem with that. But I did discuss with the attorney earlier today, and with us having three meetings here tonight, that was some of the stuff that was on the agenda, that's already been discussed in prior meetings. And it was her recommendation that I just ask that they be removed tonight, you can ask her.
I understand that, but, uh, with that said, and, and we'll, I'll post on it till the next workshop, it don't matter. But I just want to know from my opinion, there's nothing against none of y'all, uh, cause I got a bunch of stuff. The floor, you know, uh, the lawnmower, I, I like I'm saying, I ain't said nothing, I ain't put nothing on the agenda, and it's been bothering me, it's just not that issue. And, there's some, certain items here, and I'm not going to get into it, uh, that's happened in the past, in the last three or four months, that's been mishandled. That's, that's all I'm going to say, uh, it's not, was handled right, wasn't done right, and the previous thing with Jason. And y'all tell me if I'm wrong now, this is my opinion, that man over here is the supervisor. The issue we just happened, that happened last week, that man was not notified till after dark. To me, as a council member, that's the disgrace of our supervisor.
I'm not.
I'm just, I'm not going to you.
I'm not.
I know you looking at me, I'm just saying to the council and our mayor and I.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh, Chad resigned, he was not notified till after dark, of the, the, his unemployed had resigned. After dark, and he's, and he's his boss, he's the supervisor. And that's why I'm saying, lack of communication, this is the problem I got with our council now, and our, the whole issue up here, our bodies. We have not worked together from day one. We got turmoil up here, I'm just saying, I'm voicing my opinion on record. We got turmoil up here, we got people after certain employees, that's happened in the past, and we got things that don't go by the chain of command up here. He's the supervisor for a reason. If Jason's got a problem with one of his employees, he has the right to discipline his employees and then bring it to the council. He was not notified till after dark when he resigned. And, and maybe some of the council members didn't want the issue, issue brought up, but the thing is, we all human, we all make mistakes. When you step across that line, you make a mistake, you suffer the consequences. I don't care if it's a small town, big town, or whatever, you put yourself in that position to get notified. And, the thing is, when stuff like that happens, I want my council members and my mayor to back me. I won't back my employees until they prove me wrong, simple as that. I was put up here to do a job, any of y'all, I'm going to back y'all. If I think that's the right thing for the city of Vernon, to progress the city of Vernon, I'm going to back y'all. I'm not going to stab y'all in the back, I'm not up here for that. I'm not up here, I told y'all time after time, for my paycheck. I'm up here to do the best thing for the city of Vernon.
I understand, and I, I would hope that we all are, and as far as that issue that you're talking about, I didn't know about it till that night or the next day, and I've still not heard about it from the city.
Address that, at the moment that I got the re, letter of resignation, I tried to reach out to Jason, didn't have the right number. I sent a group text to y'all to tell y'all, and then I worked on getting Jason's number, and I, and I called Jason. You didn't, because I didn't have, my mayor phone was dead, and I put in there that I did not have Ms. Wynn's number.
I didn't get it, and I found out through the grapevine, about it.
And then I immediately, as soon as I got Jason's correct number, I called him.
And there's a lot of things, things that people know I don't know, so I don't know, I don't get it. And my phone number is on the list.
Well, that was the only notification I received, was the mayor's script.
Well, my, I know, but my numbers are all in the mayor's phone, which I did, it was dead and the port was broken, so I had to use the ones that I had.
Nothing to get Candace, and I'm going to ask my council, and ask my employees who worked with me on this board. When a person is terminated, a person's results come back positive, I'm asking y'all, as an entity, my vote would have been that person would have left right then. Cause he puts, or he or she, in my standpoint, puts the city in jeopardy. Did y'all notify, did y'all notify the, that employee working the rest of the day out?
You can't do that.
First of all, um, that person's not here, and what you just spoke of, I had no idea about, and it just come out of your mouth.
Yeah.
Maybe the.
So, I think we need to be very careful.
Can I say something about that? Last, the last meeting we had, when there was a charge leveled against Tracy, I wanted to say that when I came in here in this town two years ago, and I started coming in and paying my water bill, I would walk in and I would go, do you know who does wells? She would give me names of well guides. Uh, then I started asking everything, I came in, do you know electrician? She gave me electrician guides. Uh, when I came in and I was moaning and groaning about my air physicianer, she said, do you know somebody? And I said, I got Quincy, and she goes, well, we got AC guys in this town. I said, okay. So every time I had a problem, I would come to Tracy and she would give me a name. She's never given me Danny's name, until this last time, when I went over Chipley to get a list of drain field guys. And the one guy out of fifteen that called me back wanted fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to do a drain field. So I came in and I was just moaning and groaning mostly, and Tracy said, well, I've got a number, I don't know if he can help you, because quite honestly, he's right in the middle of the job. But if he can work it in, because I want him to go and get his surgery done, but you can ask him. And that's the first time I've seen anybody at city hall talk about, uh, any kind of favoritism or anything. But as he, him being a citizen of this town, and she votes people in this town for work, why, why was there a problem with her putting his name out anyway? That, I don't understand that, because anytime that's, I mean, you know, like, that's how I met Chad, the electrician, Chad Hall that time. That's how I met Warren Dan, that's how I met, uh, Gary gave me numbers of people. So, I mean, that isn't the whole point of you guys bettering our town by putting our town people out to do work? So, I, I just, I, I thought that was weird, that she got accused of something like that by somebody that wasn't here to say anything, nobody else. You, there was never a name said about who said it, there was never any proof about who said it, there was nothing done. I mean, it was just an accusation thrown out there, I thought it was kind of unfair to do.
Okay, ma'am, if I can answer on that. Um, since Tracy's requesting, everybody's brought all this up, I'm gonna let Tracy go ahead, if she still wants to, and say her piece on that, and then I'll explain what my part in the last meeting was, if that's all right.
During the seven six workshop, I suggested that the fire department and recreation director be given debit cards due to their odd hours and not having access to the city's credit cards. During the eight two workshop, President Vaxley requested that the public works director and street maintenance crew also have their own credit cards. Receipts are not being submitted in timely manner by the street maintenance crew. We are unable to recoup, recoup our fuel taxes without these receipts. This was not an issue when the credit card was kept at city hall, as they would turn receipts in when they brought the credit card back to us. In the ten twenty-six special meeting, the council president issued her report to the council. Certain accusations were cited against me stemming from events that took place in late May or early June. Including that I had withheld the credit card for equipment rental and stated that my husband's services were to be used, or the crew would have to wait until the part was fixed on the tractor. Jason Rotten, Michelle Cross and I all refuted those claims. The accusers' words were taken at face value with no further investigation by the council president. Did you consider the history between the employee that reported these claims and me? By her own admission, the council president had known about the issue for months before bringing it to the attention of the city council in a public meeting. I requested the notes that the council president took that led her to reaching out to the mayor, city attorney and bringing those false accusations to a public meeting. My requests for those records were denied, and she accused me of retaliating against her. Council president, a public records request does not equate to retaliation. I am asking that the council mayor and attorney consider all these facts and determine what steps need to be made in order to ensure that no one else is falsely accused of misconduct in a public meeting. I also ask for a public apology from the council president, which I obviously will not get. In an attempt to investigate a different situation, I also sent a request for records to Chad Jackson, which has gone ignored. The council president's retaliation efforts against me have shown just how vindictive, ineffective and ill-prepared she is. People watching the uploads of council meetings can all clearly see that two council members are quote unquote after me. It must end. The two council members need to stop twisting other people's words to fit their own agenda. I have discreetly and respectfully asked for the retaliation against me to stop. It has only gotten worse, as evidenced by all the meetings that I have attended since six twenty-one. I am now publicly demanding that all, you cease the retaliation against me, as well as the deputy clerk. I have my opinions about what needs to take place and would be glad to speak with any council member one-on-one, or I would be happy to share my thoughts in this public meeting.
Good job.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Okay. The reason that I held that information, I told at the last meeting, was because the attorney had suggested it, this very thing that was going on. That started all of this to begin with, and everybody knows what I'm talking about. We all know when it started, um, I'm, I'm not retaliating against anyone. Um, that employee at that time, when, when the allegations were brought out, he was here. He was in the audience. He left then prior. He left after it was tonight, yes he did, and you had your say that night. And I wasn't accusing you of anything, I was reporting you what was told to me, which is what I'm supposed to do.
Which was not investigated at all.
Well, I'm sorry, but I, I talked to him about it, and he told me that he was willing to give that data to the attorney. I, it was also suggested to me that I let council know, and I'm trying to do my talking too. And I don't, we, it's not like we can pick up the phone and call one another and say, and let everybody know everything, it has to be done immediately.
Oh, boy.
I'm sorry.
You have, the way it used to work, if there was a problem, you have the right to go to talk to her privately. You can meet with Candace and her privately.
We, we've asked, I will have to say this, when we asked in a, in a meeting about it, because our attorney told us that we had to handle all of it in public, to include write-ups. The mayor can also tell you this, we got HR letters, we aired it out, let's air it out, we got HR letters just for asking how our city clerk or the public works director should be written up. Because it used to be that we would go to them.
But before you write them up and you accuse them of something, can't you go talk to her about it? Is that illegal?
So none, none of the council members has the independent authority to investigate anything?
Right.
None of you have any power individually?
And I reported it to the attorney the minute that I found out about it, the very next day.
And you all passed, you all passed an ordinance years ago that it essentially requires that all of this be done in a public meeting.
Right.
Likely be cut, that was put in place, that was before my time, but that was likely because there were issues of favoritism or special treatment by a single, when, when one person holds the power or authority to make these decisions. There was some kind of abuse of that power, and so that ordinance was an attempt to correct that by requiring that only the council acting as a whole can take disciplinary action against your supervisors. Who are hired directly by the council. That's something, that's your, that's your rule, that you put into place, that you all have to follow it, because you changed that rule.
So a fact, question please, if I accused the clerk or something, I can't go talk to her, if I was on the council, and I accused her of something, I can't go talk to the clerk about it?
So this is where we get into trouble, because we don't have, none of the council members has the independent authority to investigate that.
But that's not an investigation, this is a conversation.
Yeah.
I want, I said, would you tell me?
What you're, what you're saying is, I want to have the, this, that a council member, maybe the, the president should have the independent authority to interview people about things. And that's not what your, that's not what your rules are.
Well, there's two people in a bad spot here. Uh, she was doing something she thought she was supposed to do, but where was he? Why didn't he stand up and say, I said it? She, you know, there, you can't accuse somebody one-on-one, I mean, you, you, you have to have some kind of backup about that. And, and as far as anything goes, this is public, everybody in this town thinks that Tracy got accused of doing something wrong. That's not fair, I mean, where's, why would you not go to, why would you not go to each other? I wouldn't go and say something about her without talking to her.
They can't communicate with one another.
This man probably wasn't talking to me at all. I, I can speak to the mayor, but I can't call any of them up on the phone, because it's against the sunshine law.
Right.
So I can speak to the attorney, and I can speak to the mayor.
But you can't speak to her.
And also.
But I mean, that's a bad position to be in, isn't it? Because it became public.
We can speak to one another, we, we can speak to one another on, on issues that we're not voting on.
Yeah.
So, as far as that goes, yes, we can speak to one another, you know, but if we're voting on something, no, we, we, we can't speak to one another.
Anything that's gonna come across this table, we can't, so basically, I, I, I say hi, and, and, and that's it. So, and here's the issue, all, all I did was took the information, I called the attorney the next day. And with everything that was going on at the time, she said, you need to wait to bring it up. Well, a lot of things happened, then that, that two months period. Um, and not everybody was here at the same time, a lot of things. So, the minute that they were, because it had been bothering me, because anything that's brought to me, I try to make sure the council knows about it. And this was an issue that I, I was, the way it explained to me, I couldn't go to anybody like Tracy about that, I just had to notify council. And so that's what I did, and I was not accusing, I was reporting what had been reported to me, but another report. And I was not accusing, I was reporting what had been reported to me, but another report.
I know, but it just made it look, it made it look bad, and she didn't do anything wrong. I mean, I, it, that's how it appears. I, so I mean, because Jason said, "It's between them," so, yeah, it just made her look bad.
Well, and Jason, he said that it was probably maybe a miscommunication, but all I know is what was told to me.
At the time when they asked me the night, I could, it was back in May when this happened. So, once me and this person talked about it, two days later, because he didn't come in the next day, two days later, we, I explained the whole conversation that me and her had. And, and so, when I got off the phone that day with him, with her, I'm sorry, I just shortened it up. Basically, all I done, instead of saying everything that was said, I just said, "Hey, we can't, can't get the card. If we're gonna do anything, we got, we can use Danny Strickler." He took it the wrong way, and it was just a misunderstanding. But, I mean, he went to them, I didn't know he went to them.
And I, I was not aware that there were any issues at that time.
But if you've got an issue like that, a city employee's accused of something, you're gonna wait two months?
Well, that's the thing, I went the next day to the attorney, and it was directed by the attorney to wait.
I can't help that, but that's, that's like having a sore, for two months, it gets worse every day if you don't fix it.
I agree. I was following the directive of the attorney. And also, we're in a position where those two positions, Tracy's and, um, Jason's, they are able to write their employees up.
Correct.
Personally, and they don't have to do it in a meeting, but we are subject to different rules.
Correct, I understand that.
So, it's, it's kind of a mess.
It is. Everybody needs to be careful.
Who's the city manager?
We don't have one.
You don't have one. And to the attorney, who falls in line to do that? I know the, I know the city. Well, the council can only do something when they're in session.
Yes.
I already went through that with the county up there. They don't, they're nothing when they walk out of this building itself, they, they're city council members, uh, be respectful. So, who do they go to?
Who does who go to?
Who does who go to? That's what I'm asking, who does Tracy or, or Jason or anybody like that, who can tell them?
The council.
You can only do it right here.
Yep, yes.
Right now.
Yeah.
When you all, when y'all adjourn, you ain't got authority over either one of those two up there. You can't tell them to go empty the garbage can up front. Seriously.
Your observation is accurate.
Yeah, it's been eighteen years up there being inaccurate. But that's not solving the problem. Who has the authority now, should y'all not have a city manager? Jippey has a city manager, why couldn't Vernon have a city manager? Maybe you pay him a dollar, two dollars more an hour or something. I mean, right now, y'all have zero communication with these two folks up here. Zero. Don't adjourn and go out there and say, "Do that ditch over there, empty that garden." You can't do that. And you can't talk between yourselves, because that's a violation of sunshine law.
I agree. But we've not had a city manager here but once, that I know of, and it was a completely separate person. All these seats were filled, and the deputy clerk, there was a, excuse me.
Somebody needs to have that responsibility, and that's probably something y'all need to look into.
Well, it's not in the charter.
I don't know, at this point.
Now, I just, I was hearing when the city had one, but I've never been to one.
No one said it wasn't in the charter.
In the charter originally, that authority came from there. And that was taken by the council, that ordinance, years ago.
Yeah, but we're not years ago, we're twenty-twenty-one. A lot of things changed since nineteen ninety-nine.
See, I was always understanding, if I had a problem, I could go to the mayor. That's the only person I could go to.
Well, generally, that, it's been...
You can't go to the city council member, you can't go to the mayor.
See, if this, if we could've talked, I could've hit this in the bud, but we can't. It has to come to you.
I know.
I know, and I understand where Becky's coming from, because she passed all the information, and then it makes it look bad, but, I mean, I can't even, I didn't even know until she said that. I could've hit this in the bud long time ago.
I understand, but that's, that's the purpose of having the city manager between you and the attorney.
Right.
Okay? You go to the meeting, there, you got the county administrator, you got the attorney sitting there. So, y'all need, you know, I'm just making a suggestion, but you need somebody, or you gonna get caught, they gonna sue you or do something along that line. I'm trying to open up a bag of worms, but you know, uh, that's the way it goes. Put yourself in liability situations.
If Candace, I'm just asking a question, if Candace was designated as a city manager?
Can't do it.
I know, I understand that, but if the charter were changed, like the mayor was made the manager?
The mayor works three jobs, I'm just...
I, I understand that, Candace.
But we have to have a man.
Never mind, I ain't gonna finish what I said.
No, but I'm just saying, if Gary recharred a car for a man?
I am happy to be the go-between. I would love for there to be unity.
Correct.
Okay, I would love for there to be unity, because my heart is getting tired, okay? Just, and that's on camera, but I would love for there to be unity, but we're gonna have to bring it all right here, and then somebody's gonna get mad over here, somebody's gonna get mad over here.
You can't be city manager. Irregardless, you'd have to resign that position, because always you'd be a city council member, and then you'd be a city manager, but you can't talk to that person. It has to be something totally different.
But I don't know how it, I don't know how things work. I just want everybody to get along.
It'd be nice.
Let me ask you, Michelle, since we on the city, ain't that where the mayor stands in for the city of Garnet? Since we ain't got a city manager, just say if Jason had a problem with one of his employees, he contacted Candace throughout the day, whatever day it was, she turns around, contacts the council members.
She can communicate information to you all, but, but you all can't give her back direction?
We can't respond back.
I know that.
So, she's, your mayor right now, she's just a dignitary.
Yeah, she don't, she don't have no power. She don't have power.
Right, but she does have the opportunity to let the rest of us know things that we can't let one another know.
Yeah.
But you, you do, you definitely need somebody.
I got, uh, my question is, like the situation, like Becky got the information, all right? And then we couldn't do it through these meetings, because she had gave it to you?
I knew, but, but it would come, but she talked to Michelle, and Michelle advised.
Yeah.
Just what?
That way, I could've hit that in the bud a long time ago.
Neither, because I, I contacted the mayor directly too.
Well, I'm surprised that you're not always at each other's throats then, because that's a terrible position to be put in for any of you.
Oh, I love everybody. I don't get mad at nobody. I will never get mad at it.
Well, and I...
I'll walk away. I'll walk away.
I might make a motion then. I might make a motion, y'all point Tracy as a city manager.
Did you see the look you got?
No, that needs to be a completely different person.
Yeah, no, not Tracy Walker. Thank you, I appreciate you, vote of confidence, sir.
She's confident.
She's putting her big girl panties on. Gary, Gary.
Have a motion to adjourn the workshop?
Wait, is this a meeting or a workshop?
This is, this is a workshop, we have a meeting.
Well, maybe I should bring this up about Lonnie and the community center.
Please.
For Thanksgiving. Well, he needs to use the community center for that Thanksgiving giveaway dinner.
At least you did a blanket thing.
I...
That was all I was thinking. It was a blanket thing, but I still like to bring, bring it to the community.
So, do we need to vote on it in the meetings, like we asked, did we put on a dinner, or can we just agree on it?
Just agree on it, we just agree on it.
I'm fine with it.
We just started letting it be a blanket thing, but I just wanted to let the council know.
And it stays the day.
I mean, on Thanksgiving Day, whatever.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Did I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Motion carried. Workshop adjourned.
You can cross me off that list, just be...
I opened the council meeting at six-twenty-one at seven-ten. One question before I ask for a consent agenda approval. Our tapes of these meetings are kept at home record as well, right?
Yes, ma'am.
As well, right? The other motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Consent agenda approved. Uh, mayor's report?
The Vernon Ministerial Society wants to have a pancake breakfast free to anyone that wants to come on the city square on Christmas morning.
Wow.
Wow.
So, on Christmas morning, they just wanna let, if you wanna come have pancakes, get, you know, get them however you wanna do it, but I told him I would ask the council. On Christmas morning, so...
Do you know what time the ministerial...
I do not, but I'll, I'll find out and let you know. I hope it's just Vernon, it might be Washington County, but I believe it's just Vernon. Pastor Aubrey Hurnedan asked me to check into it, if that helps.
That's probably gonna be the Washington County.
I mean, I, I'm pretty sure Vernon does have one, but there's a lot of churches in the city, and outskirts. But it may be Washington County. But anyway, the pastors would like to have a pancake breakfast. Um, y'all know that Chad resigned, um... So, we won't dish that back out. Um, I think that's all I have.
President's report, I have nothing at this time. I may have something at the next workshop. Attorney's report?
Um, well, um, you kind of already addressed it, but, um, something that I've been talking to the mayor about is, um, bringing in a firm that we've worked with in the past, uh, their labor employment law firm, about, um, revamping some of your, um, personnel policies and procedures. Employment law is a very specialized area, and I'm more like the family doctor. So, I have to know a little bit about a lot of things, um, but employment law's not my specialty. Um, but y'all have done a great job already tonight, hashing out, um, really laying out, um, the administrative problems that you're having as a city right now, and I think that a lot of that could really be helped with getting very clear, concrete policies and procedures in place for exactly how to conduct an investigation into an employee. Right now, you don't have any procedure at all on how to do that. Even through existing ordinance, there's no, um, there's no guide or process for anyone to follow to investigate any kind of, um, of allegation. That would be my recommendation. Um, I've mentioned that a couple of times, I know we...
I think it's a good idea.
We, we really can't, um... In the past, you, you have had individual members of the council or a mayor who, um, did become particularly, um, authoritative in their role, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they were, um, acting in alignment with their actual authority. So, I do think that would help a great deal to... To work on that, whether we, we start with a delegation of, of authority, maybe to the mayor, and I can give you, um, an example, um, process that we had to follow in Jackson County when the county administrator had to be investigated. It did involve having to hire, um, outside councils to conduct that investigation, but there are ways to, you know, to do this, making a, a manner that's, um, less disruptive for the city.
Well, I know in times past when I was an employee here, and it's, sometimes that's changing, I went back and forth with you several times on the fact of write-ups and things like that, all of that haven't been done in, in public meetings now, because it used to be that if a council member was writing up any employee, whether it was, uh, the head of the department or not, the council would do that, and they would generally have the mayor or somebody witness with them, and that would take place in whichever office it was. It was never done in meetings. Discussions, that, that's the way that it was done. And at that time, any council report...
When I first started, um, me, I think it was me and Candace, and then I'll be doing it. Yeah.
But that's with me and you as a supervisor to one of your employees, or me and Tracy as her, she's a supervisor to one of her employees. But I, or any of the council cannot write one of y'all up without the council saying the whole thing. And that's where the whole airing it out publicly and embarrassing people and, you know...
It was done in private.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where the city manager comes in.
Well, the ordinance needs to be changed.
So, just council agreement, and that would settle.
So, I'll just start with reaching out to, um, the firm Mr. Sniffen and Smellman, and they've worked with y'all, um, before. But I'll just start with reaching out to them and, and, you know, giving us the background on the issues that we're having and see if they can maybe put together a proposal for you to consider to work on, um, revising, whether it's revising ordinances or just implementing some different policies or processes.
Personal policy.
It hasn't been that long since we updated the...
January twenty-one, the way we did the personal policy.
So, I, I don't know that necessarily there are any problems with the, the personal policy itself. Um, we're kind of a step above the personal policy, and that's how to actually carry out. If any of you are ever informed of issues involving either your clerk or your public works supervisor, then what can you do? There, there's, there's no procedure or process for you to follow right now. And the only thing that I can tell you is that you just, you have to bring it out to the council in a public meeting. That's the, the, the basic part of the law.
And that's it.
That's all.
Clerk's report?
Um, I would like to add one thing on to what Candace was saying about, um, um, the street maintenance crew. We lost our animal control officer. So, we need to think about, are we going to send someone else, or are we gonna go with the county?
Did that paperwork ever come to you?
Yes, ma'am, it did.
I'll, I'll go, I mean, I need all to, because it just puts more on me, but if I have to, I'll go.
Either way, the city's gonna have to pay for it.
So, are we, are we advertising for the petition?
Not yet.
That's why I was gonna ask for that.
We talked to a couple of people and told them to go ahead and turn in applications when they've asked about it, but we're not advertising yet.
Jason did review the, all the ones that...
Yeah.
There were none.
There was, well, there was three on there, but they, they didn't want the job.
Well, what I was gonna say was that if you were willing to do it, and council wants the paperwork to be done again, which we all agreed that at the time that we sent him, that, that was the best decision we could make at the time. If we get more help, then maybe it'll be so strong.
But if we send him, we'll have to send the other person.
Now, that'd be my question, are we gonna send him, or are we gonna hire the new person to do street maintenance and animal control?
That's what I'm saying. What's the cost ratio between county doing it and y'all doing it?
We have no idea.
Well, I think that should be something y'all research into.
If you want to basically manually...
The whole nine yards.
I know he moved, he moved to, that what he's got on his plate, yeah. I mean, I got too much as a if, but I know that if we hire somebody else and then we send them to school...
What happens?
They leave. That's more money we've lost. How much is the cost of the school?
Four hundred dollars or something.
I was thinking it was around six, but I don't think it was anymore.
But that was for a full week of six-day or five-days.
It was local.
Forty-hours, and then paying...
They just happened to be here doing the class.
Oh, Dan, do you?
Panama.
Yeah, I was in Panama. With them? It was in Panama.
Yeah, his class was in Panama. I think that next one was like in South Florida or somewhere.
That's what I'm saying. Like I said, that's a whole week without Jason, if you send him.
I'm leaving that way I can go right now. It's impossible. Because I was gonna let y'all know, I'm probably gonna go to eight-hour days, five days a week.
Cost analysis.
I mean, I'll go, but.
Wait, we still. Are we telling you right now? Are we using the county? The county, no. We haven't even looked at them since we sent him up there to school.
So, can we give the information and have it to talk about it the next?
I would love to. Unfortunately, the county has not got back with me about code enforcement yet.
I'll talk about the information on.
The school?
Then, yeah.
I can see where it is and how much.
If she's in the area.
Do you have anything else, Tracy?
No, ma'am.
And fire teacher's report?
He's in school.
Recreation report, he's not here.
I can tell you that the first Monday of December is when basketball practice officially starts.
Other work report?
I don't really have nothing, but I mean, so I was, she's gonna take all that. But so is the, um, do you want me to start looking for a new employee? What we want to do?
You're gonna have to have a help.
Yeah. I mean, until I find somebody, I'm, I'm, I'm probably just gonna go, instead of doing fourteen-hour days, I'm gonna do five, eight-hour days. That way I'm there. I don't have a choice.
We got many vertedis for the employee position.
You want to advertise for it?
Because we already have that position, so we have to.
I, I stay.
Do I just advertise for the street maintenance, or street maintenance slash animal control?
I would just try to get somebody maintenance first.
Yeah.
Just try to get somebody that position and put them on the school.
Think about that over, pardon me.
I had a guy that he was gonna move in, he worked for the city of Parker, and he was buying a house here in Elthru, and he's still gonna put an application in, but right now, he's living in Geneva, so. But at least he's gonna put an application in, maybe, maybe we can find somebody with experience.
Text me, you get to the house.
She's trying to sneak out, she does. I'll call her out.
Other participation?
You got paperwork?
I don't have any paperwork on top of participation.
I handed it to you before the meeting started.
You better find them gone.
It's in a national mark.
No, ma'am, it's, I got checks that I handed back, but I didn't give the paper to you. My stuff still attached.
I, I put it right on the corner right there.
Ms. Tonya Boston's, oh, well, she's already left.
She's already on hers.
Had her discussion, um. I can't read the first name.
Dawn McDonald.
This is just the formal request for the approval of the Family Dollar tree, major development review with variance requests. And my recommendation is, as your planner, is that you approve with conditions and per the stormwater report and drainage being approved by our county engineer. And we'll be working through all of the city to make sure that it meets any other requirements.
That's out of number seven on margin.
Do y'all want to move it up so they can lay?
I'm sorry, you called me by name, so I just ran this here.
Oh, I see.
So, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm just saying if that's possible, that everybody ought not have to stay.
We got two-on-one public participation.
Um, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gary Evans?
Only thing I got, I'm fixing to submit request for information. I want to know the proper way y'all want that done, because I don't want to get the clerk or the deputy clerk in trouble. So. What's the channels y'all go through?
Is it public records?
Public records.
Then you just request it from her?
Alright. That's all I got.
Anything that's public records, you.
You got a form?
Generally, um.
Chapter one nineteen doesn't require that the request be made in any particular format, and we're not allowed to require that it be in any particular format.
If there's any question, it's what it's supposed to place on, she usually, we usually contact the attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jerry Brock?
Nah, I was worried about parking there after I was here.
Okay, so that's.
No, I said take it off.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hope you don't take some more of my friends.
Okay, no old business, new business. Motion to approve four thousand sixteen dollars and two cents adjustment to account five eighty-two DOT stationary zero issue. Is this one of those? I'm sorry, I can't, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, please.
Second. Discussion. Is this one of the ones where y'all had to go back through the accounts that you found?
Yes, ma'am.
How far back was the?
That's two months.
That's just two months?
So, instead of sending the bill for two thousand dollars, it was, or two thousand gallons, it was twenty thousand gallons.
So, is it, was it a new account that was just set up two months ago?
No, ma'am. Um, it was partly my fault. Um, I asked the deputy clerk to go through and check all stationary zeros to make sure they all had one. I forgot DOT does not have, they have a brand-new, um, digital meter without its stationary zeros. So, per my instructions, she did put zeros on all the accounts.
But y'all going back through now and.
Everyone is part of that now, yes.
They mess up next month, I'll raise them next.
Yeah, we're blaming Jason from now on.
All in favor? Page, motion carried. Motion to approve a hundred and twelve dollars and one cent adjustment to account eleven twenty-nine for a misread meter?
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Motion approved. Motion to approve seventy-six sixty-two adjustment to account forty, a misread meter? Second. Discussion.
I thought we got so many misread meters.
This is all the ones from the.
What? I didn't hear you.
Uh, this is all the ones from the.
Former employee.
Yeah, this is where we went through.
Blame it on somebody.
Well, he was only wanting to read on something.
I didn't say it this time.
This one, you blame me, alright. This is all the ones where we went through and made sure they're all right, read everyone, so.
Okay.
I guess.
I just want to know.
Alright, we'll see that.
All in favor? Motion carried. Motion approved. Eighty-eight oh-nine adjustment to account three sixty-four meters of issues. Second. Discussion. Meter issue.
Yes, ma'am. Their meter was changed out per the council's request, and the office was not notified it was ever changed out. The work order was done, but we didn't know that the work order was done to change out the meter, so we weren't given the new meter reading.
Yeah, he didn't.
So, was it sent back to you as being?
Right.
We have, I've talked to Jason, we've now resolved that issue. Whenever they finish a work order, they email us and let us know it's done. That way, if we have to do any follow-up, we can.
We good now?
We're good now.
All in favor? Motion carried. Number five, motion to approve Christmas prayer time route and detour.
Do we have the time?
About thirty for now.
If, if they approve it, if the state.
If not, I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Second.
He's second. Chad's motion.
Discussion. Already have.
Yes.
All in favor? Motion approved. Number eight, motion to approve mayor signing variance application permit for.
I'm sorry, you missed number seven, ma'am.
Yeah, you're right, I did. I'm sorry. Motion to approve, uh, major development plan and variance application permit for Family Dollar tree with conditions.
So, I have a little bit of concern about y'all proofing this tonight. Um, one of my concerns is that we have discussion on the record now that there are issues with this ditch that may be the responsibility of the city. And if you go ahead and approve this, even with those conditions, um, that once you've approved it, it's, it's out of our hands.
And we're liable.
And we're gonna be liable. Um, the developer may hold some responsibility, but we're, we're gonna get sued. And, um, we are probably gonna have to get your own engineer in here, um, because what, what I heard tonight is engineers saying that we've designed this based on the information that we have currently about your system, your drainage system.
That doesn't work.
That apparently doesn't work. And so, that.
So, we're tailing it.
That would be my recommendation, until you can get your own engineer to look at that, um.
Just, would Dale be the engineer for that? So, could y'all then turn around and make a motion to have Dale come look at that, so they can move forward, or whatever the council's gonna do?
Do we need to vote on that?
I would.
And that would be, um. Motion to approve the engineer to. Researcher, or what?
He'll need to do some kind of study. You'll want the, so, right, so you're gonna need your engineer to tell you where this water is gonna discharge, how it's gonna discharge, the potential for it to discharge onto private property. Because when, um. When we, when we cause damage to private property from the flow of water, that's a taking.
Okay, so I'll just write it for number twelve, as a motion for engineer to do a study on the drainage. Is that?
Yes, that's right.
So, then we're gonna table number eight as well, correct?
Yes. I don't know that you had to do those in separate, um, but yeah, you would table that too.
Alright, number nine, motion to approve the food bank use of room one free of charge.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question on number ten. Well, I can't, I need a motion to approve your regulation twenty-two dash one seven eight, nonviolent civil rights demonstrations.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. Where did this come from? I've not seen it. We haven't talked about any workshops. What, what is it?
It is, is required for our CDBG grant.
The one that we have going now?
Yes, ma'am.
It's the requirement about?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
If that's the case, I'd sit waiting, but I'm gonna see if we. The grant, then I, I table it.
You have a left ear?
I would.
I wouldn't pass them. They're in a pretty big.
Now, the CDBG grant is for the plant.
But we still have time, right? If we table it?
They need it before December the second. Because like I said, that's when they're coming to look at it.
We all read this on it?
I have.
It's a resolution.
We want a resolution. Has anybody read it?
Nope.
Michelle, have you read it?
I have, um, I had figured that it was related to a grant requirement.
It just says we're not gonna bar the doors, right? I mean, basically.
It's not like to be either. If you don't prove it, you don't get your grant.
I guess.
And, I mean, we're not coming to bar any doors.
And I don't see people coming here to write.
Alright, all in favor? Motion carried. Number eleven, motion to approve engineering firm per ranking sheets.
I got one back in the tablet.
Yeah, table. Okay, number twelve, motion for engineer to do a study on the drainage. Second. All in favor? Motion carried. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?